Good evening, we will call our article 11. Uh, so we're gonna be ready for some. Work. Yeah. Or Miss.
It's clear by the United States of America. To the law which stands. One is, I think that maybe this will lead to justice for all.
And we'll take that this time, we'll open up the floor for. And part something up. You know, I don't have a sheet, but it's you guys that have served. If you'd like to join us at the podium. And as always, just a reminder, in the address, we could have you listed.
Norbert, for police service. So tonight, I'm here as Chair of Parks and Parks. We're getting a ton of complaints about the tennis pros invading our tennis courts again. But we've done, I mean, this has been going on for twenty years. Um, we've kind of done everything we know how to do with lobbies self-blocking locks we pull on the gates. We have a number of keys. The president's all agreed not to get his keys out. Although that's our biggest problem is that we're not right, we're not going to give the keys out to the pros. So we're sort of up against it. We're getting a lot of complaints. Somebody ran into the public last week and started yelling at me, which I'm sure you guys get all the time. But um, so we reached out to the chief to see if if the police could help with like going by the tennis courts and checking keys. But um, sort of let these pros know that we're kind of serious about enforcing these rules. And it's not something that the P E can can help with. So I'm looking for your police ranks to help us figure out a solution. It seems like we need some kind of an enforcement officer because somebody needs to be able to go to the tennis courts and sort of say, what is your your key? And if it's a pro who has the key, then that key gets confiscated. The resident loses their ability to use the tennis court for a year. Um, and the pro mayor may not be trespassed. But we sort of feel like if we do that for a while, then maybe we can make people understand that we're actually serious about this. Um, but you know, residents can enforce this. We don't want anybody getting punched out at the tennis courts. So you know, maybe there's some some way the town can help with this.
So um, this is a very regular theme, so enforcement of facilities.
Yes.
Do you know, for example, if you walk down there, would you know who the pros are?
I wouldn't. Uh, Don or Dina or, or you know, Suell, some of the tennis, the tennis people could tell you that.
Okay. No, I mean, there may be a way to have a conversation that way. I would want something to be rather targeted. And also, you know, some residents giving these individuals access or the keys.
And that's that's totally.
And those are the same residents who are complaining they can't get on the tennis court. You know, so it's it, you know, sometimes we're often, there are oversubs as as you know, we've been doing this for a long time and I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, but I do, you know, again, this this puts us in a situation of using police authorities to enforce civil things. They get a little interesting, so we can try to minimize those negative impacts. But I I think, Chief, if we if we knew, hey, this gentleman and this particular, um, they need their instructors and they're not, they're instructing someone from out of town. Someone has that local knowledge, so maybe able to have some type of conversation there.
Well, we did. We did. I mean, Robert's suggestion was to um, post the uh, non-urgency number. So Diane jumped on that. So we we're gonna, we're gonna paper the tennis courts with signs and say, right, if somebody's here that you think shouldn't be here, call this owner. And see if we get some engagement that way. Mostly what happens is the residents go up to the court, they see that the court's so full and nobody's moving, and then they leave. And then they send a nasty email saying they can't get on the tennis courts.
Also stated some tennis courts have been closed. I read that email screening.
Um, um.
Other from from somewhere else?
Yeah, uh, Lake Cypress or um, the Hyatt Cypress, yeah.
And that causes additional, are those gonna reopen?
No, no, they're they're changing that to something else.
Okay.
Um, it just causes, I mean, the, you know, pros have to go, pros have to find a tennis court to teach at. And that's generally their problem, they can't afford it, so they're always looking for empty courts.
Well, the only, you know, and the only other alternative is sometimes you can't even join them if you charge those pros. And designate a particular court, I'm not telling you.
Yeah.
I'm just saying these suggestions. Um, I'm open to other, you put it as well.
Um, but it's a whole enforcement thing. I I mean, what the what the pros do now is is they'll have a lesson with one resident. They'll go on the court, the resident leaves, the pro sits there the rest of the day and schedules people to come for lessons. So he's he's on the court and he lets them in.
Is it one person?
There's a lot of tennis pros out there.
Okay.
So that's it's not one, but.
Clearly, I'm not, so that's why I'm.
I'm not, I'm not either. Um, but there there are a lot of semi-professional tennis players who make money teaching kids tennis lessons. And they all need tennis courts and they don't want to pay to go to late games. They like our courts better.
Just gonna get T-shirts that say, do the right thing.
I will, um, the chief though, if somebody calls, they'll go and check and I can check. And that could actually do it because it'll take, you know, look at enough calls and enough people to take it off. But also, maybe we could go right up and make it that.
Sure, absolutely. I I don't know. I mean, you know, I think I would take that in the angle of.
Yes, we're also, we're we're gonna send an email to all the tennis members and tell them about.
Well, the thing is, on our sheet, you know, when you guys, well, the resident's signing a contract that they'll have writing on text of their address, and then the residents, and then if they give their key away, that it will be taken away. So I I know we can't enforce that, but it would be nice if we did some written texts and places signed. But I I I get that it's it's too much right now, but maybe if we figure out somebody.
But can we do that? Are you sending that note to all the tennis players on the phone number? Now everybody will know.
Yeah.
And I mentioned the policy, and it's very common. I mean, that's a good idea.
I will, definitely, we'll definitely try and help with that, um, and fix the.
I had a point, maybe we should talk today about this. Being a former police officer, we don't want to get caught with our hands, you know, there's our, I just speak to chief, but I think that I would want to know if I was a police officer. If I showed up here, I have the right to trespass somebody and I have the right to question them. And that's where I've been my rights to go further. So I guess what I'm trying to ask is that you, we, this contract, I know H O A contracts are very mine. Oh, this contract, and I'll say, say I'm just a police officer, then the pro says, whatever, save the contract. It doesn't mean nothing. What can I really say? Oh, yes, it does mean something, it means the key. Because I'll be stuck there with my finger in the cloud and saying, well, okay, walk back out, let it do anything. And that's a real issue with police officers because sometimes we distract somebody, it's hard to do like, and then we get back out embarrassed because we were.
No, the board, right.
So that's where they should do a great act.
Isn't there a sign there, like at the border, and it say residents only?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, but I'm saying, can we go in there as a police officer? Can we take the key away and can we give away the resident's key? Just because they signed the contract.
So if you, I imagine that that's an agreement that you signed. And I think that we, I think we put that into effect officially, I believe. Um, councilor, have you ever called?
I don't remember what the penalties, I don't remember what the penalties said in there.
I mean.
But there's something in there because I helped draft it.
Yes.
But to me, it sounds like the issue here is the instructor's going with the resident and not leaving with the resident. So I think the resident needs to realize, and I have a feeling the residents don't even realize that if the instructor doesn't leave with them, that they're at risk for losing their key. Or maybe they think the instructor's leaving five minutes later, who knows? But that seems like the issue that should be addressed first is you bring somebody in with you, they need to leave with you.
I think that needs to be made clear in the letter of consent to tennis players.
Yeah, it's very clear in in the rules. I I think, I think you'll find most of the tennis members know the rules because they tell me very sharply. But when I point out to them that always, all of everything they're complaining about is against the regulations.
It it, I mean, it's a really challenging situation because you have a few people that are using it.
Yes.
And there's a finite amount of tennis courts. So I agree, let's make sure we have the authorities, then if we can identify, you know, we'll do some some public notice. And then if we can identify some bad actors, maybe we can uh, bring that to bear upon those individuals. And I mean, I think I can speak with the council here. Listen, we don't like to hear about this stuff either, it's kind of a continuing problem. We'll help you enforce it as long as it's legal and it's party and it's forcible, we're all about it. So um, I want you guys to have, you know, I want residents to have what they think for.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nora, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention and that's difficult. Andy.
Hi, we're in Haines, eighty-five of Dale Street. Um, I have two things, and one I do have to address by help town, I'm not sure. But um, regarding the investment project that says it's going to be split into two different projects. One to be moving forward with funding from the uh, state and then the other one to be town funding later. So I'm curious what that's split is, it's not really explained in the agenda packet. Second thing is our lovely Waste Pro Services. Um, we have people in my section, the quadrant of town that I'm in, complaining. Um, and I wasn't aware of their illness, so I spoke to my husband, but we've been finding trash laying on the ground everywhere. First, we thought it was coming from construction. Um, but this morning I went out for a bike ride after they came through and there's just little things everywhere on every street. Um, so I talked to a couple of the neighbors and I spoke to my husband, and I guess they have a big arm on the back of the truck. And instead of looking at the can and dumping it in, they're not using the little arm, it partially lifts it up and whatever falls to the ground, they're leaving behind. So it's on every street in my quadrant, every single block has something still laying on the ground from them. So anytime we call Waste Pros, like if you're, if you missed a service, whatever, or something like this, they don't really address it. Their guys just keep leaving stuff behind. It was a trash truck, I did kind of, I was kind of out there recycling things at the same time, I didn't really see anything like that. But I have people say, um, you know, that the cans aren't completely empty either, and there's more reasons, so. Now, look at the issue.
Explain.
I think this is new too, because I think the thing about us picking Waste Pros because if we put you on, well.
It was a sidearm, I think this is a back arm, to help them just lift the.
Correct, they have like a little arm, so it doesn't go up from maybe the down. Yeah, you still can't pick up piles of wood. This is just like a little tiny arm that reaches out the back. They kind of lift the can into place, it pulls it up, it dusts it in the back, puts the can back down. And whatever falls out, they'll, yeah, correct, it's just kind of sideways in the back.
So. And it could be all over the place.
Absolutely.
See, see if something's amiss.
Sure.
If the arm isn't.
Absolutely.
If everything is working properly and be verified that that's an issue.
Yes, sir. I'll have my team monitoring that as well.
And we'll, when we discuss the project, if that you answer, so have questions. Um, so it is municipal clerkship, so Dorothy is not here, so I'm hoping to be here when we reach her, but we can't agree, we're gonna wait. That, or is she online?
She is, yes.
She got that too. She definitely agreed yet with her not being here.
Dorothy, are you good with the mayor reading the proclamation even though you're online?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, that's fine.
Yes. Thank you, Dorothy. You're quite welcome. Hi, everybody.
So we certainly appreciate um, our municipal clerk and Perkholder does a great job for us in the past for uh, many, many years. So I am pleased to read this proclamation for Municipal Clerk's Week, this is April 30th to May 6th, 2023. Where is the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exist throughout the world? And whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality, neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government in the community. And whereas the municipal clerk continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk. The participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of the state, provincial, county and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Jim O'Brien, here at the town, will therefore recognize the date of May 1st to May 7th, 2022. As Municipal Clerk's Week and recognize that the Florida Association of City Clerks, the Professional Associations for Florida Municipal Clerks, is celebrating its 50th anniversary. I further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Dorothy Perkholder, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services that they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Due to this 11th day of April. And I believe that, maybe it should be May 1st to May 7th, uh, 2022, because it looks like there's a little bad language in the last paragraph. But we appreciate you this year, Dorothy, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Just a few public requests to realize how much I appreciate your clerk. I promise you all that. Dorothy, we'll look forward to presenting that to you in person, uh, once we get it correct on your return.
Thank you.
For good business, um, meeting minutes, we have two on the agenda tonight. It's town council meeting minutes for March 14th, 2023, as well as a town council workshop, each of our discussion dated March 28th, 2023. Council, you can approve these as one, or you may pull them and discuss that or um, decision. Very, very wish. Right, councilperson Davit second, by councilperson, councilman, per session comments or questions? See now, we begin voting with councilperson Rose. All right.
Aye.
Aye. Council. Next up in our agenda packet is Resolution 2023, Dexter, three, this is a renaming down yonder range to Down Park Range. Uh, this is at the residence request, council, this is a board auction, uh, but we are looking for a motion to approve of this objection. Yes.
Mayor, I think it's a pile of files, please. Um, yeah, I forget, Mr. Scall, did they, have they been on the side of any things in the church?
And it's a private.
And it's private.
When, there's no other park lane in the town.
No, sir. We we ran it through the um, address tag to make sure we removed the dead old lane fact.
I'll make a motion for sure.
Any motion, my councilperson Rose.
There's a problem. There's a problem.
I was kind of serious, right? I'm just asking you to do it.
Um, let's, how about we get this, and then there's another question. All right, sorry, councilperson Davit, um, I'm sorry, councilperson, so you want to know whether they didn't.
Well, I'm serious. I think they're coming out of the daily times or something, I don't know, so um.
They didn't tell me either. I was just chatting to the attorney for the after this year, I don't know why. Um, good, I'm going to come to members.
Did you join us at the podium, sir? Uh, give us your name.
My name is Michael Scala, on behalf of the property owner of the subject property, um, at ten ninety-eight Down Yonder Lane. The owner is also the, or was also, the developer of the ten plus acres on um, Down Yonder Lane. But to answer your question, the the story behind the changing the name, I think the mayor is correct. It's a little bit, um, I guess outdated and it kind of sounds a little bit silly, to be quite honest. And I think any citizen is um, at their own liberty to making an address change on their own property. But um, yeah, it doesn't exist, we've had breath and helping us out pretty uh, pretty diligently. And we might have gotten notarized signatures and consent forms from all the property owners who live on that street. Um, also the property owners who are the actor, have a easement on the peninsula there as well. So they have to go through Down Yonder Lane to get to their property. So yeah, we're just uh, looking to make the amendment, I think Down Park Land is a little cleaner.
That would be the next question, what about? You said we have to read to this. Yes, sir.
No one's objected.
Yes, sir, yeah. And the fact that you have your approval by outside compliments.
I know one question, the office is there to change.
Yes, yes, and what what I do if you approve it, we send all the notices to the post office, to nine-one-one, Orange County Master Address thing, um, property praiser, pretty much most of the world. And that's uh, get all their records updated. And that's why we come to you, what they ask us is.
Maybe we have done it before, we've we've renamed a couple streets. They did a great job with landscaping out front, making it look nice, and I think they're just trying to bring it up to date. Okay, if you guys are good with it.
Yeah.
All right, that's up down Yonder. Down Yonder.
Down there.
Down there, all right. Um, any further comments, questions or concerns, council, see now, the pen, voting now, so just here. All right.
Aye.
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 All right, here we go. Resolution twenty, we read up here, three, reaming Down Yonder Range, the Down Park Range dispatching. Thank you, council. Except because I need these are town council board committee, they days on the silence. Right, disappoint everybody, get the sun back. It's always fun, we're here. Uh, so that would be good, um, but I try to, so you guys spend a lot of time in prioritizing what you, you know, are most committed to and and uh, and most interested in, I always try to do my best to honor those. So basically what I do is I take what you guys like to do and then request it to do, mix and match that a little bit with some wording and uh, do my best. But uh, pretty much every year, definitely I disappoint somebody, so I'll try not to this time. We're gonna start with the councilperson David and Parks and Recreation, are you? Not sure, number one choice, who tried the farmer's market selection? I think we'll start there, a question on one other, so we'll see how that one goes. Councilperson Davit, um, you were a little tricky, so uh, public works, I think you've been doing a great job of that. So really right with your rally, so appreciate your expertise there. Metro Plan Alternate, that was something that you had specifically requested and I appreciate your support there as well. Um, and if it's okay with you, was your number five choice, but the historic preservation? Was it? Yes, it is okay with you? Yeah. All right. So person Rose. Um, number one choice was administration budget and finance. Got that there. Um, Butler Chamber Links Advisory Board? Yeah, all right. Hang on that. So person's true, long-range planning today. And so I uh, I was gonna ask if you would do the tree board, if you are not interested in doing the tree board. Um, we can ask uh, councilperson David, is there number three choice?
Sir, um, what's your option?
Well, probably, you know, and things like that. And then um, the Police Department Liaison. All right, and then, and so you have also person Williams, uh, West Orange Chamber uh, alternate unless someone else is interested in doing that, you know, we don't want to mark that, so. Um, and then your your number one choice was Development Review Board. I know we've rotated a lot of people throughout that, I actually like that we've rotated a lot of people through that. It is often folks' number one choice. Um, Holiday Social Committee. And your favorite, School Advisor, you can maybe open it, like a personal favorite, thank you. Um, and then we have one left, the Elder Affairs Committee. Um, you have been doing that, you have four others, so um, if you want to continue to do that, or is there another councilperson that would be interested uh, in doing that particular position? Actually, it could be a lot this year, we have already lost.
I mean, it's whole, yeah, yeah. Take a lot. Mayor, do you know where the West Orange Chamber comes from?
Um, they meet on uh, the third, Thursday. Like seven forty-five. If um, that doesn't work, then you know, we'll figure it out.
Is it alternate or picture?
Okay, and then from the builders, all right, all right, we'll swap that out, all right. Did anyone, did I miss anything or disappoint anyone so much that they want to let me go?
I should tell them that too, do you need something else?
Usually that will happen, um, I know that's other, that's the special committees that are gonna come up this year, I think. So as we get into the hundred and over two second vision, it's not a good thing. All right, thank you, guys, I so appreciate that, that really matters a lot to all of our committees and volunteers as well as. So T S M O, it's transportation. We talked about this, it was, so it's a transportation safety, well, the reason is because typically the public works director.
What, Metro Plan?
No, Metro Plan is separate. So Dorothy's been doing Metro Plan, but T S M O is a different. Google, it's Transportation Systems here at operations. Yes.
I will look into that.
I'll tell you what. Because I've been going to the small, uh, advisor or Metro, right? So typically elected officials go to that. But the T S M O is normally, it's more functional, so.
Yes, I go to, I go to two Metro Plan meetings, I go to the one for um, rail and all of that, and then I go to the one that's for Public Works Directors and Engineers that happens after that. I do that.
So you probably don't need another, the T S M O thing just came up a couple of years ago, we had never done it. So we also have um, representation for the tourist tax, we're, now, there's a lot of boards, they can take all, they can take all your time for them. Let's check out the T S F, the T S M O piece and we'll come back and circle back on that.
Sure. Sure.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Next up, section that is financial, this is a requested approval of IPO number one sixteen for Kimberly-Horn Pedestrian Bridge uh, project. This is a request of fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars, a board option and I.
Mister Mayor?
Are you gonna present?
Well, can I ask you to switch and pull Bessie first, so Hal can address that? And then Mike, Mister Woodard is on the way, but he's caught in traffic.
Oh, not a problem. All right, so if council is amenable, we'll swap items number one and two in the section. Uh, so we'll start with the approval request for IPO number one three zero for Kimberly-Horn. Um, this is the Florida Department of Emergency Management Grant Support Bessie Basin Project. Uh, there's an eighteen thousand, uh, forty dollars. Uh there's an eighteen thousand uh forty dollar request um in permanent at Kimberly Horns.
Yes, and before Hal gets started, just to address the public comment, so um this is not actually a second project. This is in addition to the engineering work that they're doing currently on the project. What's been happening with this particular one is Hal and his team have had to work very, very hard in order to. Um get the damage assessments approved for this project, so it's become a lot more intensive on the grant program, so this is not, this is not a second project as. Was made in public comment, it's just to ensure that they are getting paid for the work that they're having to do to keep this grant project going, so with that, I'll let Hal explain.
Sure, so as Tom and Dave finished up the Bessie file design for this project. And submitted that through F D M and we've gotten quite a few R A Is, um just because of the size and possible projects uh compared to the benefit. We have to do what are called uh damage tables, D D F tables, which provides a cost of benefit ratio or benefit cost ratio. And it has to be above one for D E M to approve it, um because of the size of the project of Bessie through multiple iterations. Uh the F D M uh determinant was not cost feasible, so we had to um look at different avenues to try to get that project funded through D E M for phase two, which is the construction phase. Um so what we can do is you can adjust those R I R A Is, you can have a multiple meeting with staff and continue to have those meetings. Um in order for it to become cost feasible, we had to model additional storm events. So every storm event deals a certain amount of damage mitigation and that's your benefit, and so really in order to kind of um. Increase the benefit aspect, we mo- we modeled uh multiple storm events, not just the standard twenty five, fifty and hundred year, we did like the ten and. And the twelve and other storm events like that, and then we also had to separate out the project. Uh the reason why we had to do that, the reason this IPO is needed, is because we had to remove the portions of project that did not provide a direct flood mitigation benefit. Also, although the project provides conveyance, erosion and drainage benefits throughout the board, or only the portions that are downstream really provide a flood mitigation benefit. Because you have to demonstrate that without the project, it would be flood activities on those properties. So to answer Randy's question, the split that we had to make in order to get the cost benefit or benefit cost ratio above one. Was we were currently um splitting out the plans so that uh from Oakdale uh west. Would be part of a future project by the town when funding is available, so that would be both sides of Oakdale and then on ninth, west of Oakdale. If that's the upper part of basin. The portion that provides a direct flood benefit would be on um ninth from Oak Ridge. Then up to east and the portion of eighth and Bessie. So those portions are the ones that are more prone to flooding, they're lower, closer to the lake, so that set of plans is gonna be uh signed, sealed and sent to F D M. In order for us to uh proceed with further evaluation for the phase two funding. The portions along Oakdale and ninety west of Oakdale, as well as eight, uh west and east kind of the mandorly area. Those are shepherd plants that that uh ties in with the F D M set, but have would have to be constructed by the town funding kind of late date. Um so that's kind of what we've been having to do and what we're working on and that is the the reason why this IPO is needed, and so I'm open to have any questions.
So how close were we on the V C A for the upper portion?
So when we did the V C A of the whole thing, um the F D M review said we're at point six, which was pretty low compared to a one. When we removed that, I mean while the different scenarios, we were above one, they didn't exactly tell me how much you're above one, they just said it now determined to be cost feasible. And it can move on to the next review, which is the environmental review, so um so we're working on the environmental review, but um it was point six when it was the entire project.
So the environmental review is the last portion of the review prior to phase two, correct?
Yes, but it does only go to F D E P for a historic review, which could take up to six months and.
Boy, yeah, environmentally it takes six months too.
So I think we're, I think we're well through environmental, we sent them the information that they requested. Um so the next take, the next process will be go into D E P for the historic review. And then they would send an agreement to the town for your review and signature, and then that would um that would essentially um. That would then give you a phase two funding for construction of that portion of Bessie that I described.
And how much funding did we receive for phase one?
So for phase one, I think initially the, I have to look at my numbers, um mayor, that I believe that the D E M portion was roughly eighty grand for the portion. And Tom and I have been working with the D E M project manager, as we've been getting these these uh amendments for. Grant administration, uh not grant administration, but for grant assistance and responding to R A Is. We've been requesting that number, we added to the F D M phase one grant access for design, uh we intend to do the same for this. Um you know, upon approval, um then we would contact the uh project manager of F D M and ask that. They um we request that they increase the phase one budget by this amount, and then you go through that process of approval.
Sure. Also any questions?
Yeah, we're clear, so the phase, I'll call it phase B, uh portion that that most would be funded by the town later on, have you submitted that at all for V C A?
Uh no, not separately, so because because those, that that V C A would generally be very low cost and dangerous because it, we could not.
I just, I think it would be beneficial for the council to understand how low that portion is.
Yeah, it's not, it's really not an eligible project, like it's.
Yeah, just just to confirm that and whether it's even worth the town's funding at that point. So you know, it may just be a good uh analysis to do, just to have in your pocket as we discuss this further.
Yeah, we we could do the D E F tables on it, but. I I don't know if D E M would review it again, just because they they already stated that portion was not cost feasible, but we can definitely do those damage tables. Um the issue with those is they do provide, you know, conveyance, erosion and benefits. But just through modeling and through the elevations on the upstream basin, we cannot demonstrate that we were alleviating flooding provisions during those storm events.
If if that's not appropriate, we will do, I think the council will need some, you know. Measurement of how beneficial the two persons the cost of accomplishing the project.
So what we could do is we could use the deep F D M tools to provide you with. Um with the damage mitigation and we already have the cost based up on our annual probable cost. And with those spreadsheets, you can get an approximate um uh benefit cost ratio, it kind of does go through F D M's um. System and they don't give us all the tools, they give us certain spreadsheets, we fill them out and then they do a part. But we could definitely use the tools that are at our disposal to provide you with that information, so you have that for future efforts.
So the challenge of the H P M, the V C A, is they keep half the magic behind the veil.
Yeah.
So they don't give you the full formula. And that. That's the challenge that we face here, these, and as these projects have become more expensive. The V C As are harder to make, so that has been really difficult industry wide for these different projects. Um councilperson Rose, I'm sorry, I said that.
Yeah, um. Is if if you're only gonna do the one half of the project, maybe it's two thirds of the project, but we're putting off the other one, will that? Will the one that we're not touching, would that create any kind of flooding that's gonna be worse than what we have now? Is it gonna still flow into the system that you're creating?
It will still flow into the system that we're creating, but um where we're not putting swells, you still may experience some of the erosion and washouts that you have now. So I think that really the re- the the upstream basins were more and more for conveyance. So those areas typically do not flood and I I don't believe that they'll flood based on typical storm events. But the uh you you won't get the same conveyance through the swells as you would, and also we wouldn't be regrading the roads. So that will, that might flow down the middle of the road like it currently does now, but when it gets to the portion that we are designing. Our roads are pitched towards the swells and so it will go in the swell from that point. And and our swells are our size for the runoff in that upstream basin.
So we'll make upstream worse, I think, is that we what we wanna make sure of, uh we don't wanna create a problem that we don't have. Um but I also understand we're still going to transfer sediment because that's, the 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 upstream swells won't be there to to mitigate that.
So the upstream uh the upstream basin uh will not be worse or be essentially the same.
Okay.
But the downstream swells will be able to convey that water properly and provide the erosion and sediment control that we're in force.
Just one more question, uh respect your contract, so your contract is a T N M contract? I'm materials, sorry.
Uh this one is structured as long some, uh we can change it to T N M if needed, but this one currently structured as long some. Because we, for this one, councilor Dennis, we've had a very, a lot of experience with the D E M, so we can, we kind of know what the tight scope is, uh it's okay with a long some based upon the tight scope.
Okay, and this this uh trigger.
Correct.
Okay.
So hang on one second, I'm trying to make.
Make that decision, we'll get to it.
If you have any questions, so um. This eighteen thousand, that is cost incurred because you did redevelop the plans because the whole project wasn't approved, basically?
Yes, that's part of it, the other portion is um the meetings with F D M that we had to have and then the R A Is and also redoing those D D F tables. And rerunning the different storm events, so kind of all of the analysis and coordination and also splitting up the plans so that the town that too gets us.
So yeah, what happens with F D M is they'll send repeated requests for information and additional information over. Need it, so and it stretches out, that's why these mitigation projects have become really challenging for small municipalities.
So I have to be, there's a lot of stuff I saw that passed, but something I've seen passed before, but. But we're certain that that second phase, it hasn't been approved by the necessary, because they were thought it was necessary, maybe they exclude it just to. This is just part of the second half. So we're we're certain that half is necessary also?
So um and you correct me anywhere I'm wrong, but so they do not, they can still not approve the second portion, but they have to reimburse you for it. They they may say no thank you to phase two, that is their option, right?
Yes.
But they'll reimburse us for phase one, which is where we're at now, so even if they give you the permission to plan and engineer. And they can say, hey, that's great, we love it, or they can, they they could say no. Um but what I do know is that we have a lot of these mitigation funds in the state. And a lot of projects are not being accomplished because of the excessive costs that are being. Those cost escalations, those V C As are not working as well as they used to, they're probably gonna have to change that V C A factor. And that yet, because they have to work under the rules of the disaster that these ones came under.
So there's no way to go, why not, there's still trouble, there's money on that.
You're, well, you're, it's, you you could be, we could, we're not gonna lose the money for phase one. We'll get reimbursed, whether we would consider that a waste, still, you know, I know that's a broader discussion. But usually if they let you get to this point, they want you to complete it because they're smart on that as well, so. Um I think if we can have a good V C A and we can get phase one accomplished well. And we've got a plan moving forward, there's a good shot that we would have phase two, is that fair?
I I think it's a good shot, but like you said, there's no guarantee, they can come back and say that there were other projects, but. Um they have a higher V C A ratio, uh but it it is, getting past this stage is a good shot.
Yeah, it's competitive processes as well, but I I think, you know, one of your concerns, like, are we gonna get stuck putting a bill for phase one? That should not happen. It's a wild project.
That's why we're pregnant, it's to make that first phase more powerful versus the overall project, to your overall project, we're getting close to.
Right.
Business case counts, it's more, it's like a fragment down to the more powerful portion, push it forward and that's that's what we're at.
It's a little, yeah, it's always like we should be engineering and helping, so yeah, that's. All right. What's, any further questions? We should have your first person wrote this.
Oh, I'm.
Any good comments, go ahead.
Randy Haynes, A three five Oakdale Street, so I know I'm supposed to direct the questions to you, but I don't think someone is gonna be able to answer this, so.
So direct your question, we'll get an answer.
Okay, so if we're talking about, we're talking about the intersection, that's my intersection. So if one understanding correctly is that the east side of Oakdale Street, which includes basically the land adjacent to my property and the lances that are across from me. Those swells are gonna get done, the left side of that intersection is not gonna get done, but part of the full project phase. Is to have the pool bird that's existing that goes from the northwest corner to the southeast corner of that intersection. Be changed to now run straight across the street. From the new house that uh was built a couple years ago across from me directly over to my corner. But we're not gonna be controlling any of the water on that side, which those swells are not functioning. Because when that house was built, those swells were filled in, but we're gonna dig up my side and. Put a full bird underneath the road that's not catching any of the water under there. Then the full bird runs along my property and then my driveway comes out at the other end with a swale and a crowning road. All of us is being done to convey the water from across the street, that's not not going to happen, this part of the project is made for her. My other, which like I'm not, I'm not following how this makes sense and it's not including crowning the roads, crowning the roads is the only way the water's making it into any of the swells. Because along that entire stretch, um until you get down to East Boulevard, pass the part of Oakstone. The road is lower than the yards by two to three to four feet depending on where we're copying. So if there's no crowning of the road, I don't see how any of that's functioning, and I don't want a wet retention area in my yard. So I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm mentioning that up correctly, the second component of this is, is that. You know, the uh public waters was supposed to be coming in for the water managed uh. Port public water plan that um Wade Trum came up with, so does that mean that all stops too? Because we're not, you know, coming in from Main Street, we're not doing any portion of the main part of Oakdale as part of that project, how does that affect all of the. Cause of the water part of the infrastructure that's supposed to be done at the same time with this, for saving the town money?
So it won't stop that portion, um but I do wanna, can we get clarification on? Because it it sounded to me like that upstream portion wasn't gonna be completed, so her her property would stay the same, or am I?
Sure, I misunderstood. Um so, so from west of Oakdale, if I'm being sure to be correct, I believe there is a swell where that new house was built. We were looking at possibly, I believe, regrading that swell to provide a little bit more capacity, but there is a swell there. There is uh, there is a side drain that comes across over to the swell and will maybe grade in east of Oakdale. So that will provide some conveyance, like it historically has. Um although we're not regrading and re-crowning the area west of Oakdale, we are grading, crowning and raising the road as in the east of Oakdale. So that water will flow into the swells and we're in the process of splitting the plans up and we'd have to provide it for review. But basically the upstream basin will function as it currently has, and we're, we have the swells and the crowning of the road. East of Oakdale, it's all kind of a downstream basin to accommodate that flow from the upstream basin, as well as the flow from the downstream basin itself. So we are crowning the road east of Oakdale and raising it as needed.
So when you say crowning the road east of Oakdale?
Fifty and four as well.
So does that mean Oakdale on the east side of the road or the properties east of the road itself?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure that's clear.
So it would be the road, that would be ninth street east of Oakdale, it would be that road being, uh when I say crown, be pitched towards the swell side we're proposing. And then in the areas where if the road has, we're in overtime and it's below the swell, then we would raise the road up so that it would properly flow into the swell. So it is actually the dirt uh the dirt road um on ninth east of Oakdale.
Right, so so Oakdale itself will remain as it is, right?
As it is until the the town project comes to.
Until, right, because there's not, because that doesn't, okay, so I see Randy now shaking her head because, so.
That water's on the street, it doesn't.
It it is.
They can't get to those swells because the road is lower than Oakdale Street and the road is lower than ninth street. But I mean, the road is lower than those properties that are, if they fix the swells and the road's still lower. You can fix the swells all day long, the road's still lower than them on Oakdale and ninth.
So I I hear you there, so what I'm trying to determine is, if I'm understanding it correctly though. We're, you're not gonna create new swells in Randy's yard, or will you on the one side of the yard?
On the one side of the yard on uh adjacent to nine.
And will that swell then flow into the, into the new project?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not, what I wanna make sure is we don't create an orphaned swell.
Yeah.
Uh, change there, and I don't think that we would do that, but I wanna make sure.
Right.
So, but that upper area there where those, where there, where there are some culverts now, that new piece of property and everything. Those are going to remain as is because they're not, they're 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 basically maintaining it out of the project, current project.
Correct.
And we're confident that won't make anything worse?
It 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 will not, it it won't improve the situation on the north side of the basin, but it it won't make it worse. Um, I know that Todd, I know that there's some roads where you've you've upgraded it with the new um paper, uh, paper material.
Yeah, so, well, you all weren't having this conversation, I I know that Councilman Davit was wondering whether it was profitable to continue to the other side. So what you have to remember is, the grant that they got is for some stormwater improvements. But there's also swales which are conveyance and treatment, which is important. In addition, it's, it's redoing those roadways and getting them back to the correct elevations as well. So um, that's an important part of it, um, and I do believe that Robert and I have discussed the fact that, you remember these projects are seventy-five, twenty-five percent. So the town still has to pay for portions of the project, so. Robert is aware of the fact that we had to take a certain section out that will now become town funded. Um, and and I think he was okay with that at this point in time, so. We're talking semantics here with what he had to do to get this project funded through FDM, doesn't mean that we don't intend to do the Bessie project. As it was intended, so I think that's important to understand.
Yeah, that's important to me.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so what you're saying, just so I can clarify for everybody, so what you're saying is that. That we have the funding available and intend to continue to build this project out as a whole. Even though we have separated it for the.
Right.
For the HMTP FM funding.
Right, right, because it, it also doesn't, it doesn't make sense to separate them because you really actually just wanna do them all at the same time.
I totally agree.
In addition, you want a contractor to be able to bid on a full project because it'll be difficult enough as it is with Bessie the way it was. To to nail this, so this, this is, I think we're discussing semantics here, I think. Um, Robert and I know that we have to work to try to fund that as a complete Bessie project. It's just how does it get funded and which portions are we now paying versus what the grant is paying, so I think um. I I don't want anybody to get too upset about this, we, we're continuing to have Bessie be the Bessie project. And and Robert's aware of what had to come out, um, Hal is aware of the costs for, be associated with what had to come out, and so. We're working to do that funding for.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think that I missed for sure, and I don't know if anyone else, it it sounded like. It was gonna get parked for a little bit and then we would get to it, but, but this sounds more like we intend to do it as one.
Yes.
For multiple reasons.
Yes, but but it's important for everybody to remember that we do need this FDM grant funding to, to to be able to do these stormwater projects. So whatever they can fund, we need them to fund.
Right, it just makes it more achievable.
Yes.
When this goes out to bid, it's really two packages you're gonna have contractors bidding on. You wanna select one contractor, you can vote, but it's gotta be split up.
Yeah.
That's not what I heard, I heard that some bit, that one, one plan package for.
At to FDM, yes, whatever gets bid that they're paying for, that package goes to them for approval.
So we'll have a, we'll have two plans package, um, there'll be a town's responsible package and there'll be an FDM package. And then it'll be up to the town if you wanna bid those together at one time if the funding works out. And I was unaware of the timing as well, that's good news that if the timing works out, that both projects can be bid at the same time. Uh, one contractor we selected, but there'll be two separate set of plans and they'll just have to invoice each set separately, the FDM set versus the town set.
Well, I understand that's the intent, I think council is to review the funding streams for all phases, you know. Face one is a funding stream that is primarily FDM funded. You know, we're picking up the bill for a majority of face two, whether we agree to that or not is, I think, another conversation.
Well, only twenty-five percent for face two for the project as we are discussing it. Downstream to be funded by D and FTM. Me though, I know, so, okay, so let's, let's.
So face one is completely funded by FDM.
It's also a cost.
It's also a cost share, when we we do twenty-five percent.
Yeah, it's always said about twenty-five.
Two is funded by, if it's not under the FDM.
So, okay, so now here's a little bit, so, we've got project A and project B, right?
Right.
Phase one of project E is what we're currently talking about, FM funding twenty-five seventy-five. Phase two, same, seventy-five twenty-five FM. Project A, the upstream portion is out, we we will fund that, that'll be our entire.
Self-funded.
So just to, just to clarify, we're all funding some. I would guess that if we don't receive the face two funding from the HMTP FM project for the downstream portion.
Yes. Right.
We're not gonna have that funding available to do any of this.
Right.
So, the cog in the wheel is to get the downstream funding portion done at seventy-five twenty-five, we have them. And then we will then have to come.
Right.
And see what we can gather from our stormwater funding assessment.
Yes.
To do upstream portion.
Yes, and Councilman Davit, you're not doing anything with that tonight, all you're doing is giving Hal the go-ahead to get us the funding for what they'll fund.
Are you supposed to express it? Okay, sorry, yeah, we got, sorry, we got society, the intent is it's.
Well, I completed for you because you're doing it every day, it's just like. We got questions, we don't know what you know.
Yeah.
Now I know what everyone knows.
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, now I'm back to motion of everybody else's person rose, okay, um, I mean for a second, Councilperson Davit's second. Um, council, any further questions, comments? See that, we'll begin, we don't need you. Bye.
Hi.
Bye.
Hi.
Right, thank you, council, sorry that was a little hard to get there, but we got there and then you.
Thank you, I just don't want anyone in the audience to panic.
Neither would, uh, but no, I think it, in the end, it's a, it's the step in the right direction, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood the risk and how they're bidding there. And I didn't leave anything upstream that wasn't. All right, we'll go back to uh, request for approval, I need a number one-one-six for Kimberly Martin's to the downstream bridge project. This is a request for fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars court option and we're assuming on that as well, a little sec.
So first of all, I'm sorry I'm late, uh, Michael, we're getting more, uh, one eighty-nine, or down in Ohio. I came straight from Longwood for a site, so yeah, apologize for not being interactive. Um, this idea was to, to add some budget to the existing project that we have, and there's two reasons. One of them is FDOT got involved because the town was going seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to go towards construction this project. Now, in order to receive that money, we have to go through FDOT requires significantly more documentation than pretty much any other agency does, so. If you're working for any city in town, there's um, the design is gonna be the same, it's the amount of documentation that's different. So in order to go through the extra documentation, uh, we requested this IPO. In addition to that, there's a matter of the walls approaching the bridge where we initially assumed to just have. The other law went through the scoping process, which was about two years ago now, um, we assumed that we would just use earthwork, like fill. To to lead up to the bridge and then the bridge would take off right from there, but as we went through this process for a number of different reasons. Uh, we decided to go with with walls, and that's another time, internal decision, that's based on uh, coordination with the community. Uh, looking at impact and potential of exit canal, as well as, as well as some other factors, so because of that change, we had to design those walls. And so the cost uh, with, just under, under fifty thousand dollars to. One, provide the documentation required by an afforded department of education, and two, design the walls leading up to the bridge. And if there's any other questions on that project, I'd love to talk about it, but.
So I I know one question that a lot of people have asked me, and that's timeline.
Yeah, yeah, that's tough, um, I, we, so the town, they received that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, which would have covered the project had it gone construction two years ago, right? Cost of that, it's too definitely, uh, I'm pretty much all types of materials, concrete, which is a big part of this, steel, so. Um, right now, we're, we're really going through and asking other agencies or other, uh. It's through the Florida Senate, they're asking for another appropriation to try to get additional funding for it, to kind of minimize what the town would pay for. I know that the, the town manager has set aside funding where it could be self-funded, but I think it would be prudent to see if we can be successful getting revenues from other sources. Um, totally out of my hands, but we're at the point of being ready to uh, complete the design where. We could go with construction, right, so we're at the end of the design, the next step is construction, we don't need right away acquisition. There's no other interim steps, so it could be like within the next couple of months after, after the design plans are finished and she could bid. But because we're looking for other funding sources, um. That may or may not be in the town's best interest to go straight to construction, if if there's potentially additional fin- funding from that federal. Okay, good, any additional questions?
Explain to me a little bit about how we worked from. For the budget to the structural wall.
Sure, so um, there's uh, one fact, one fact there is just uh, reducing the office of of kind of, once you do that earthwork, you gotta tear it out. So let's take care of all the trees in the area, and then on the west side, um, we're also doing a shared con. With the uh, dirt road or dirt Main Street improvements, and so in order to have that shared con, there's a fence that's, that's actually, it looks like it's. In the town right anyway, but that's, that's walking spring, and then if we go straight from that fence and go up, um. Well, we don't have enough space, like enough lateral space to to make that difference in grade, and also to kind of harden out a pond with a chair for, for both projects. Um, the, the only real solution is to have, have a wall instead of that gradual part, um, in the other.
All right, so it's all for uh, just preservation of the overall footprint?
It's, yeah, so we use the footprint, it's absolutely to reuse the footprint, it's, it's not an aesthetic choice, it's just, we, we have limited amount of spaces to, to, to compress that. And uh, the other direction is towards the canal, where if we just use earthwork, then that would have to be reinforced, which then gets into. More questions about replacing that seawall, which we're trying to, we're general, we're not replacing the whole thing, so sort of uh, uh. Project creep, uh, we very much be at risk, but we could go with walls this way. In the other direction, I'm sorry, I'm all structural terms, have long maybe, um. That just reuse the footprint of the, of the portion we need to actually bridge construction.
So in lieu of doing that, um, earthwork. Bring to this structural wall, you guys got an estimate of the cost?
Like what the cost of the wall is versus the cost of the dirt, we have to act next.
So we, give a question on this.
We have a question, is this, is this bridge being done at the same time as the road? I'm came and like to this.
Yeah, so, so the whole point, the, the road, when you talk about the road itself, you're talking about Main Street.
Yeah.
So that's not gonna change, because that would be a full FDOT project.
Okay, so the road's staying and we're just.
Right, we were in a trellis. Which was a super affordable way to do it two and a half years ago, um. We were able to get the appropriation, I think about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, working on some additional funds, but. So from what I'm hearing, it looks like the, the trellis bridge is a lot more expensive now, is that?
That would be, that is, that would be, I mean, I know everything, it's, it's gonna be like mile and a half of, of concrete, of the trail itself, um.
Well, so you're factoring in full trail and everything, not just the bridge, okay?
Yes, it's helps. I started the entire project from North Street, which is where our second up to school. Then the northern portion is just.
Not that it can be.
I mean, were you talking about whole dirt main or were you talking about?
No, I mean, I guess, I'd be required.
So pavements in this day, um, the intermodal pathway, we had a bunch of, basically our face one. So kind of from the church, north past the bridge, so that was gonna be our first bite of the apple. Um, and that obviously costs is going up as well, so, uh, but the bridge was kind of a miserable piece of that. Um, we kind of engineered it, selected it, but you know, we're just making some changes, I guess, how we're gonna place it. And the seawall, it's important because we messed with the seawall, that's gonna, the crosswalk's going up significantly, so we're trying to just. Bridge the seawall and leave it as it's.
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Yeah.
I thought the wall was a seawall.
Sorry, it's more that part that goes up to it, you have to come at an angle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question since you'll know, I have time.
Thank you, it's a reason.
Uh, I've heard a lot of the things, how wide and what's the surface of the bridge?
Yeah, so the, the width, and we went through, uh.
We did.
Yeah.
We went through this, so, um, and and there's, there's a good amount of discussion, so for it, for most of it, um, we're looking at ten feet. You wanted to go less wide than your standard twelve feet wide path. In order to sort of discourage cyclists from traveling, two facts, we wanted it to be friendly for, for people who also wanted to, to walk, so it's having a, uh, uh, speed. Or, uh, so, as we get to the bridge itself, um, once you get close, kind of towards the north end of Old Lake, there's a, a ramp that will allow golf carts to get out. And you have to have a sign that says it's for golf carts only, you know, uh, the technical warning surface for any blind people that have to be there. So because uh, it's, it's gonna be fairly steep, like it'll be fine if a golf cart are too steep for a minor to walk, so you have to assign it to say golf cart.
It's gonna be a designated lane just for the golf.
Not a designated maybe, excuse me, not a designated lane, but it widens out to, to, to twelve foot path at that portion. And it's wider as you go over the bridge, wider for golf carts, could, could happen, they're both coming at each other at the same time, they pass each other. Um, and there's gonna be bollards at either end, it will prevent the golf carts from traveling on the fur. So at the point where that ramp is for the golf carts to get out and off, there's bollards where they're not gonna be able to continue for.
And the surface is gonna be what from where we're here?
Uh, concrete.
Another bridge, I can not do, I'm mad the whole time myself.
Yeah, we get a concrete, it's like a concrete, mostly, um, because you have, there's electrics. And that became a huge, of course, a huge portion of the project, we spent a lot of time weeding around trees and, and coming up with plants to preserve the roots so we could. Uh, keep as many of the trees as we could, and even, like, and that's a species there, um, some species, it's a camphor, right? That's not native, it's, like, the, we're not worried about that, but, um. The point there is that those roots will really tear off asphalt more than they will concrete, and so we, we speced out six inch thick concrete. And uh, matter of fact, that was one of the comments that FDOT came up with, so, um, they wanted some more information there, but. Uh, concrete was the surface that was chosen just mostly for its durability and for these limits.
Yeah, I think one of the big things, Tom, we were really concerned about is we didn't want, saw it happen over in Central Park where, you know, we use asphalt. Uh, way back when to, to do the pathway, and then, you know, it just becomes a treasure, so. Kind of wanted to do this right and uh, make sure that we were robust enough and everything that we did, so we're not, you know, have.
So you're talking the entire pedestrian path from where it starts, where it ends, is six inch?
I think, yeah, I think we lined it up, yeah, yeah, I think it widens out after portion where golf carts are shared out. And I believe that, especially since you're gonna have a variety of, you know, uh, pedestrians, golf carts, bicycles. You know, I think down the road, it'll pay dividends in terms of maintenance and not having to, um, replace all those sidewalks, so. You know, we've seen what happens with four sidewalks here already, so that was, yeah, we were just trying to do it right.
I was just trying to use your name, I've heard a lot of animations and even side thirty dollar assets.
Do you have anything that you can? Absolutely, for my group, unless you're in first. Oh, sure. Councilperson David, any further questions, comments, or concerns? Tina, will you answer the question for us?
Hi.
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 Hi. Thank you very much, counsel, and that idea number one one six passed. Gentlemen, we got questions in. We've come through. So that ends our formal business for this evening. We'll move on to our remainder of the day. And counsel, please, on reports. I I have just a couple of quick things. I want to thank the police department for helping us fill on the great. But a good time, a good turnout. Counselperson David, don't guess. Yeah. I still have chocolate in the back of my truck. And then, you know, I tried not to get too much into what's happening in Tallahassee, guys, but I do want you to be aware of this. So as everyone knows, everyone that serves on the town, me or 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 counsel, that's just fill out what's called Form 1, and that's your financials. Very brief, relatively easy to fill out, and it, but still required. The legislation that is in front of the House of Representatives coming up this week is for us to do a full public disclosure of financial interests. This is a Form 6, okay? It's back and forth, two pages, everything you own, everything you owe, your net worth and value for you to do, you are volunteering unpaid counsel duties.
So hard to associate for a while.
It is, it is hard enough. It's hard enough to get people to serve as it is. I'm going to send something out later tonight to everyone. If you guys need contact, I would appreciate if you do that. We don't need to make this harder. There are issues and money does move politics, but it doesn't rule into your politics and it doesn't, because there's no way to be made, I promise you that. So I would just ask that that we can part about some exclusions to this at the very least. I'm all about transparency, but this is literally going to every piece of property you own, every debt you have, so and every stock you own. I I'll pass this one to you guys, so I'll take a look at it. I don't think that any of you guys want to do it. I will send dollars. That's all I have. Anything else from the counsel's report perspective? Yours would be H P H I notes. I'm doing it all for you. I open up my gap. Alright, and staff members.
Nothing for me this evening.
Thank you for writing Chuck in with us tonight and putting up all the questions. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Counselor Ramos.
Well, I had six bills I was going to go over, but now I only need to go over five.
Only five, yeah.
Yeah, so actually, Robert and the the town managers, they kept them the same in the city managers and county managers on Form 1, which is kind of surprising. But there's still a whole month to get that changed. So some of the other ones we're looking at for local governments, sovereign immunity, which they try to do every year. But this just shows how greedy the trial attorneys are being this year. They're trying to go from currently the sovereign immunity caps for local government are at two hundred thousand per person and three hundred thousand dollars per incident. So they're trying to move that this year to two point five million per person and five million per incident, which is kind of crazy.
What are they, developers?
No, so the trial attorneys, trial attorneys. They're getting a nice chunk.
They actually pull around over for some.
Exactly. Well, you know, I mean, if there was ever a reasonable amount, you might see it go up again. Remember, they tried this last year too. So and then, but one of the things that that bill does, it allows a city or county to settle a claim without the need for a claim bill if that amount is covered within the insurance limits too, which is could be helpful. And then House Bill 405, municipal elections. That proposes an amendment to the Florida constitution. The ones I'm talking about, the other ones I'm talking about are all statutory amendments. This is a constitutional amendment, which would prohibit nonpartisan municipal elections, like which is what the town of Windermere has. And then it would also provide that only qualified electors in municipal election with the same party affiliation as a candidate may vote in the primary election for that office, which is, you know, definitely not a good thing, but that amendment to the constitution would require a sixty percent approval by voters. So I'm I'm thinking that one's probably not going to, not going to go too much further, but we'll see.
But it's very unfortunate because the offices that work with us are nonpartisan offices, nonpartisan officers, because you don't get caught in the you're you're not indebted. You, you know, so it is a big deal. You look where government works and and each major person generally doesn't reach a good compromise piece.
Absolutely.
Heather Huhup is pushing that.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't jot that down. I can send that to you tomorrow, though, if you'd like. Yeah, I'll send it to you tomorrow. And then there's some local regulations on nonconforming or unsafe structures, which could apply to the town. That doesn't apply to single-family homes or structures listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And then there's the one that you were all emailed about to give a comment about the local ordinances. And just as a really quick background, part of it that I had already talked to Robert about, and this doesn't really affect the town much. There is the ability, or has always been the ability, in our eyes, in local government's eyes, when you advertise an ordinance for the second hearing, if someone like a developer says, we want to move that, then what we've always advised the council is if you move it to a date, time uncertain, because everybody that's there to speak about it should be sitting in the audience, that that's okay. Well, there was a court a few months ago, or maybe six months ago, that said, that's not okay. And they struck down an ordinance and everyone in the local governments were just freaking out about that. So the Florida League of Cities put a provision in that one House bill that you were asked to comment on, which said that in the statute now, if it is moved to a date, time uncertain, if it's an ordinance, that it cannot be struck, that it'll be lawful and will not be struck down. So that's a good part of that. The rest of it, I'm not sure. We've heard this before. There's a requirement of local governments to prepare a business impact estimate before adopting certain ordinances. And that excludes zoning and land development. There is a provision that a court can award attorney's fees and for a successful challenge to a local ordinance. We've seen that before. That hasn't ever gone through. And it caps at fifty thousand dollars, the amount of attorney's fees awarded to a prevailing party for such a challenge. So we'll see what happens with that one. Again, like I said, it still has about a month to go and oh, session ends before the next council meeting, so I'll give you a a better update on some of these other ones. And then a fun one, someone's trying to stay to change the state bird. I just thought maybe this is like a good Jeopardy question. If it changes, no, consider the mosquito now. So the state bird's been the mockingbird since nineteen twenty seven, and they're trying to change it to the Florida scrub jay. So I'm not sure that I know what the scrub jay looks like. It's funny because Tom said to me, I was telling Tom Wilkes about this before the council meeting, he said, is that a a
Like a blue jay, right?
Something like a blue, I don't think so. Is it, is it a
It is.
Is it a blue jay? Okay.
And are there a lot of mockingbirds in Florida? Isn't that the problem? There's no mockingbirds here, right? The way things are going, we should change it to the.
In twenty, in nineteen twenty seven, there must have been a lot of mockingbirds. But anyway, I'll come back next month with with more like what what actually is going to happen at that point.
No. Just a lot of things that kind of, that there's a lot of power and a lot of dollars being pushed on the surface. Our own local authority where, you know, supposedly all these folks came from, have forgotten pretty quickly that that, you know, you you guys can't go to Tallahassee and do what you did tonight and ask questions, work through things and work on solutions together. We can only do that here, so. But this is what happens. We get usurped and then we can't do anything with trees, can't do any building nights. And every time you try to put an ordinance in, they're going to get sued. So it it tends to make things a lot harder to do and keep her.
So when we respond to whoever you're going to tell us to, we got to separate it out, I think, between the volunteer positions that we're in versus what, you know, people get paid.
Right.
And we couldn't even get reimbursed probably for an accountant to take a look at this and say, did I fill this out right?
Well, I mean, so the crazy thing is that there are things that occur because because you guys, we serve as volunteers. When it comes time for a public records request, we can't get reimbursed for that. When it comes time for, you know, one of the things they look at is like, if you have a budget, if your municipality has a budget or a certain amount, it'd be excluded from these things. I just want to make sure that it's, you know, it's just very difficult to get people to serve. So, you know, let's not make it any harder.
It's really such a deterrent to want to volunteer your time, to spend half a day or a day or, you know, as much time as it takes to file your tax return to fill out your Form 6, which is a public record and everybody can see it then.
Well, and and I think what, I'll be off my soapbox and say, but whatever it takes me most is at the same time, we're saying that the governor can fly anywhere he wants to fly and doesn't have to tell anybody where he's going, we we have to wear your bets out in a faction. It just seems a little too dumb to me, so. Mr. Cordyne.
Well, yeah, I was going to tag on a little bit to what Heather was saying. Another bill that's actually been passed and signed into law related to planning zoning, well, I'm actually aware, is the local act. I don't think it'll have a big impact near New Haven, but that's an affordable housing act that goes into effect on July first. But it can have an effect around us. What that new law says, that any property that's owned commercial or industrial in its use can be used for affordable housing project, the local government has to approve it. There's limitations to it, that the private has to be at least, I believe, it's forty percent affordable housing, based on the city definition of affordable housing. And it has to be guaranteed for thirty years. The local government, we can we cannot require them to go through a zoning change, a land change, or any kind of special approvals. They are also guaranteed to be able to develop the maximum density that your restrictions allow. Fortunately, here in Windermere, your maximum density is three quarters of an acre per dwelling unit. So you don't have a density that anybody wants to do that. And you also can't regulate height. It's limited by the existing height within a mile of the property or five stories, whichever is greater. So that that's, the new law was affected a whole bunch of people to it about the tax credits and all that. Again, I don't think, it won't have an impact here. You don't have the way and you don't have the densities for this to work. But around your perimeters, there are potential opportunities for that. So just so you are aware, that does, that is an effect.
So if you think there's too many apartments on the wire already, just imagine.
So if somebody wanted to turn the building over here that's been in sale for a year into housing, into multi by this bill, you can't make them rezonant.
Can't make them zone, but the most destiny they could only get would be one unit per three quarters of an acre. So they'd get one and a half units or something on that property, how big it is. So fortunately, the way your land use is structured, your future land use and your zoning structure, anything that's not already planted or already existed that are less than that, anything new that would come in can't be less than three quarters off of the lake or an acre on a lake.
And then we had a clear, right?
Right, 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 right. If you go through a PD or something like that, they 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 would do something different than, I think they would still have to go through that process.
So the piece of that that I don't think you mentioned is that you might say, well, people probably wouldn't do that, right? The developers won't do that. Well, there's a big pile of money that the state is just approving to fund these various projects. So as developers, all of a sudden, performance changes and it's very attractive to you. So you will see these projects. Let's design that way.
I have a question. What about the piece of property that sits between Town and there a quarter, but it says Windermere on Simon's issue? Is that, is that something they could use that for?
That's actually, that property's in town.
It is.
It's in the town, yes.
So it's not in a quarter.
Yeah, it's in the town.
It was designed and it's cut out.
It's probably.
It's a legal property, cut out for themselves. Here, just right there. Any bills to double stuff?
None of that. The guys, the team did a really good job. As you guys know, and they have, may know, we've got four consecutive life sentences for homicide. We had a couple of years ago, unfortunately, that's been a problem, but we're glad that everything is not a load we rewound and designed it. We had some CIT graduations. We're doing a system training class this week and a peer support, so you see multiple audiences in our parking lot this week. And a DUI class that we decided for next week is closed down. Griffin's going to be off in about a month with a boat hit, so that's it. That's it for me.
And yeah, I appreciate everything that that you and the team did and all the officers to support, not only fellow officers and and the case itself, but the, especially with the family the whole time. That was a very difficult time for everybody, you know, have to relive all of that happened with that particular case. Appreciate you representing us with such high levels of integrity and grace. Nothing else for the good of the order. We will adjourn at seven twenty seven.